It shows no water meter then provided on the fire item. And so, uh, I would like for, uh, the police department to move forward and go into an investigation, to see if there was a theft of service.
So, so are we just for discussion? I, I, I'm, I'm just, uh, I, I don't know about, I've seen the video, but I, there are two things, there's some policy pieces. There is the, um, the mayor said he gave them, he, he says if they have permission. So first did we, did the mayor give a developer the authority to use city water for their development? And so that's, if he says yes, that's a whole different conversation than saying we send the police to do X, Y, and Z. And so, cause the mayor says if they have permission, and I don't know what permission the mayor has that's not documented. And so, so in our process, this can be, the mayor talked about two other experiences with the, 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 uh, I think the trail riders. And, and so we just wanna, we don't wanna compare trail riders to people who put up a full-on development with no water meters. So the question is, do, does the current construction companies that are currently developing, do they have a temporary water meter? Uh, um, Mr. Mayor?
I have no idea. I, I was not privy to the video, so with all.
No, 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 it has not.
It does. I don't know what you're talking about.
I am, see, I'm not talking about Mr. Lever's video. My question to you was, does the developers that's in the city of Prairie View currently have a temporary meter, which bills them based for the water usage? And so, being the person who handles the day-to-day, we need you to find out if we ha- if Panther Hill, the gates or whoever, whatever development, has a temporary water meter. So I'm not talking about Mr. Lever's video. I'm saying there, there's a, um, right now, there's a process for a temporary water meter. And so we need you to find out if those developers have a temporary water meter, which means they're paying money to the city for the water they use to fill up their truck.
I still don't have a name. You want, you want me to answer a question?
So, so, Mr. Mayor.
We're talking about, was it more than one? I said all.
No, so, Mr. Mayor, have you gave any developers?
Yes.
So, what were those?
Several over the years?
No.
What, hold on, hold on. The city practice, based on our public works folks, has been to work with developers and others. Some were trail riders, some were the people at the, uh, homecoming, tailgate things. There've been several things. This is nothing new.
So, so, so people hooking their trucks up to fire items when our citizens are charged for water?
No, they, they, who said they didn't pay?
I, well, we actually.
No, no. You asked, have I authorized them to hook up? Yes.
And, and so.
And we don't have anybody in the city not paying for water, to my knowledge.
Over the past thirty days, have you gave permission?
Over the past three years. Yes.
But, Mr. Mayor, my question is.
Yes.
Over the past thirty days, have you gave anyone, before the thirty-first? Because that's when it was brought, uh, in city council meeting, before the thirty-first. Thirty days prior, have you gave someone, uh, well, a developer permission to, uh, use water?
Yes.
And who was that developer?
I think that one would be campus edge, just before we cut their water on and did the connection. The, uh, gates of Prairie View, they're not ready for water yet. Panther Hill has had it for well over a year, um.
They've had temporary meter or they've had you let them use water? Because again, we should get.
They had water about to be cut on. And the time and effort to hook up a meter, when someone needed to do a feel for something with their construction, when they were, they had already paid for our connection and the lines and all this other stuff. So they were in our system and about to be hooked up. They just needed water and they didn't have any. And a decision was made that day, yes.
So, so they wasn't built for the water on which they got that date, due to the fact, oh, oh, due to the.
They all paid for water.
Due to the fact that they pay, but, but, excuse me, if I'm wrong, you need a temporary water meter to go get the water?
The city.
Okay, so if I might, I have given a legal opinion on this.
You did, and we don't.
And, and, and basically, my recommendation at this point is not for city council to question the mayor as to whether or not he gave authority, because it may have been whoever's in charge of water in sewer, it could have been, and that may be acceptable. And the person it needs to be acceptable to is your city prosecutor. That's the person who's going to say whether or not they would accept a case for theft of service. It's not a matter of you guys questioning him here. It's a matter of you, you referring it to the city prosecutor to work with the police department to determine whether or not there's enough evidence for a theft of service case. There's other city ordinances that I provided you with that may or may not. But for the theft of the actual water, which is what you seem to be focusing on, that's a decision of your city prosecutor as to whether or not he would accept the charges. And he's gonna need to tell you what those elements are.
But, before we even, so, so I think we're talking about charges. My, my question in reference to what we're talking about on number fourteen. Said, uh, policies regarding utilization of city services. And so, I bring it back to temporary, it is our responsibility to find out if we have a policy for a temporary meter. If we have a policy on it, that's, we need to follow that. If we don't have a policy, we need to create a policy that the mayor, but the mayor, again, we, we keep saying this. The mayor's in charge of day-to-day, but he don't get to say, he don't get to divert from what the policy is. And I think we, we use this terminology loosely, and I wanna bring this back. The, the mayor doesn't get to change what is in black and white. And so, I'm, I wanna simply say, this is just a state, that was just a statement. I wanna simply say is, can we find out if we have a theft of ser- or, I mean, a temporary metered policy? And, which is the first part. If we don't, we need to get a temporary service policy. And that was what I had talked to Mr. Byron about, um, that he had gave a recommendation of a city. But what I'm saying is, this is something that ha- hits the day-to-day, right? So the mayor should wanna have a, a, a temporary metered policy or, or recommendation to bring to us, so we can then go get a policy which shows us working hand-in-hand. So if, if the, if the concerns have been brought to the mayor, and then the mayor said, hey, we need a, we need, that's the recommendation, we need a policy for this. Then city council, then comes with the policy with the attorney, and now we, that's how we pass legislation. And so, I, I don't want us to just jump straight to the penalty piece, which the, the attorneys already told us. But there is some missing pieces where we, we may or may not have a, a temporary meter. But also, the, if the mayor says that he's given approval to a company, and they're about to get the service on however many days. If they've used water for thirty days, the mayor doesn't get to make that, make that decision, right? And so we're saying to the attorney, what do we, what do we need to do to make sure that our policy allows the mayor to do what he needs to do day-to-day to move forward on this issue with temporary meters?
Right, and so what I have done is provided the current city ordinances, and it's up to you to make the policy, not me. So I'm happy to make any policy that you want me to make. But I don't know if you have a copy of what was provided to Mr. Jones and the mayor, because I didn't, I, I provided it to who had it on the agenda to begin with and to the mayor. And I don't know if you have a copy of what I have given them. So why don't I provide a copy to the rest of the city council?
Please.
Yeah, typically, when asked for an answer, I give it to the person who has it on the agenda and the mayor. And then if it's a topic of discussion, it's distributed further.
And whatever we need to correct, we'll be glad to do so. But in working with our public works guys, as situations came up, and Mr. Glover is our most experienced person, literally longest-term in the city. The city practice, man, I need a policy and the mayor be correct. But we've been doing the same thing he told me the city's been doing for the last twenty-something years since he's been here. So in working with folks coming in, as well as residents and everybody else, uh, we do that part with Ms. Durham. We treat everyone the same, and that's what we've been doing. But again, if there's a policy that needs to be updated, cause we got a lot more going on, it's just updated. Item fifteen, discuss and take action on developing an ordinance scheduled to be updated online, Councilman Jones?
Uh, I just moved that, I moved that our ordinances be updated online monthly, I mean, uh, quarterly.
Motion on the floor?
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded that the city ordinances be updated online quarterly. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Unreadiness?
Uh, my unreadiness is, um, what is the, but this, uh, that, uh, uh, I would guess it would be changing it to quarterly, um, when it's supposed to be happening as-is or, or do you want the way it, I mean, what, what is that?
So, as-is, uh, do talk this, uh, with Attorney Sarah Hill, I'm sure along the way. Um, but, uh, as we know, our ordinances haven't been, been updated, uh, when, when we passed them. And so quarterly allows us to do it, uh, at a cheap, at a lower rate than if we used to update it every time, um, that we used to change a, a ordinance.
Yeah, it's still, it's still not an insubstantial cost. I mean, I, I think it's gonna be well over a thousand dollars, but I don't know the exact cost. And I don't know if that's each quarter. But that's one of the typical timeframes. They, they either do it constantly, continuously, or they do it annually, or they do it quarterly. I mean, whatever contract you get with your company, and you just don't have one right now. You're not updating them right now at all, so.
Correct. So, so I'm, I, I'm, my unreadiness is for, if, even if we went with the quarter, are we going to, can we get a document, is, uh, in reference to the, um, what does that look like, right? So part, part of our iss- our issues we're having is the, is the front office process on. So we said, we said we're gonna do this quarterly, but by, once we pass it, do we just put it into a holding place or where we say, so for the month, we pass four, for the other month, we pass five, and then all ten go up on the third month? Because without that process and just letting it linger, this is kind of what we've done. And so do we, outside of just passing this, is there something else that, that we're gonna say?
So, so what you would do is actually enter into a contract with the company? I'm not quite sure which of the companies, there, there's only a couple in there.
Franklin.
Franklin, yeah. Uh, they have an actual contract that they can send you that says, we'll update it, you know, on a quarterly basis for X number of dollars. And then what happens is they contact the city and say, it's time for you to send in your ordinances. And they work it into the code. If it's a kind of a loose ordinance, it doesn't have the numbers, they'll fit it in there and make it numerically correct for you. Then they send it back to the city secretary for review to make sure that they included everything. And then she gives her okay and sends it off for God of the. And there, and there actually is an ordinance at the time you codify it that city council approves as well.
So, Ms. Minden, if, if we can get you to get with, uh, Judge Alexander, uh, she has that information. And then we'll know when, how much, what the, what the fees are, and, and then we can get on the appropriate schedule. Yes, based on the contract, yeah.
What they add to that contract, um, if we could get like multiple, like, like, if it was like a monthly, if it was a quarterly, just so we could see the different prices, if there is a big difference, uh, just so we have options to have whenever we make a decision.
I understand, let's get, yeah, she can get that for you.
Uh, I think the motion's on the floor, so call for question.
All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Unanimous? Item sixteen, discuss, consider, and take action on study on city demographics, Councilman Wallace.
Yeah, so I know with us, um, we, we, we need to continue up, update information for the city, especially, uh, as we make decisions for it. Um, I think the last time we had, uh, the community, um, analysis from the community development, uh, group, um, that they give a lot of information, so with the updated information, uh, we, I think it would be smart that we ask the community development, if we set up some parameters, uh, for them to, to seek out different information for the city, so it can be updated, so that we can always have good information as we make decisions going forward. Uh, so, if council agrees, um, I can talk to the community development, uh, program, uh, see, uh, get some suggestions, offer some parameters that we would want to know, uh, for the city. And then get back to see, uh, what we can do in terms of partnership with the program.
Sounds good. Can we get a consensus?
Uh, I move that we, uh, give Councilmember Wallace, uh, some demographic as counsel, that we give Councilmember Wallace some demographics, uh, for
the city of Prairie.
For the city of Prairie.
Sir. My, my. It's been properly moved and seconded, we got the readiness, Councilman?
So, so it should be that we give Councilman Wallace the, the authority to go get the, go get information for the community development, for Prairie University's community development department to do a study on city demographics. Is that correct? What is your motion, Mr. Wallace?
Want to accept the friendly amendment?
Yeah, I accept the friendly.
Did you get his friend?
Call for question.
All those in favor, uh, unanimous, facts. Seventeen, discuss, consider, and take action on application for the Community Engagement Board, Councilman Wallace.
So, a couple of weeks ago, I did a presentation on, uh, it's all about together. On the Community Engagement Board, I talked about applications, just so that we get everybody a fair chance that they wanna be a part of the Community Engagement Board, ready to have an application, so we can see a ton of people that are interested in that spot. So, with one, it's, can I see y'all look over it? If, uh, y'all do accept it, I would want to open up the application, uh, for starting August twenty-sixth and end on, uh, on the September twenty-third meeting. Uh, which gives about, gives four weeks, right? Which I think is plenty of time for us to get the word out, um, let people know what's going on. And then once the application's closed, then we can go through the pool applicants.
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Uh.
Um, if we're having a discussion, is there a reason why this is not to our, our ready application? And then we just include that name and they could just fill out what we currently have?
Is this from the regular application?
Yes, very similar.
The boards and commissions application, that looks like the city.
No, he made that specifically for, this should look like it's specifically for this, not necessarily what we have.
So, the thing was, so with my application, it gives more in-depth detail, um, in terms of like, why do you wanna be a part of the board? Um, you know, do you have any experience that has to come with it? Just so it gives us a little more, um, meaning to, you know, the type of applicants that are applying for the Community Engagement Board.
So would you, would you have a problem with people having to fill out both? So if you wanted information specifically for your board, but like, all our people who serve on committees fills out the standard city one? And so if you wanted additional information for this specific committee, would you have a problem if they had both? Or would that be too much? Cause again, we wanna make sure.
I, I do want, I do want the process to be simplified, at the same time, um. So, like I said, cause I do think it's important that, uh, we know, especially with the Community Engagement Board, like the type of people that wanna be in there, um, and, you know, what, why do they wanna do it? Like, are, do, like, what is, how do you wanna engage the community type stuff? So simplifying that process.
Well, well, remember, we're a municipality and open, when you say type of people and stuff like that.
Not, not like that.
I mean, I'm just saying.
Yeah, I, I don't mean like that, in terms of, uh, just the intentionality of being on the board.
Okay, Councilman Jones?
Uh, I move, uh, I move that we approve the Community Engagement application with title change of State Community Engagement Board.
How do you do that? I second that.
Uh, it's been properly moved and seconded that.
Uh, that we approve.
Application to the Community Engagement Board?
Yeah, with the title changed to Community Engagement Board.
Okay, changing it up top, okay.
My unreadiness?
Readness.
Um, attorney, um, can we have a separate application, or is, is this filed like this? If we can, then. So you see, you have, that's our application. Do you have a copy of what, uh, Councilman is proposing? No, he's proposing something different.
Oh, I know.
Because it's different than.
It says boards and permissions.
Well, no, he wanted to change the name, so that name would be, the name at the top would be Community Engagement Board.
Okay.
Now, we're, we're, we're asking, do, is this, just this application, okay with that name change? Or do they also need to do the other application and this, if he wants to keep this application? Or can we just accept this as the application?
But you don't have to have the same application for all boards, but did, did we create this board yet? I thought we didn't.
Yeah, cause, uh, it was months ago when we approved of it, um, and I think in like December. Uh, it just that the presentation was the fruition of exactly what it's going to be.
But you weren't gonna do the ordinance that we'd worked on then? So you actually created with all of the definitions?
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, cause the ordinance that, that you, that you sent me, right?
Right.
Which was for the, uh, for the engagement board, cause, but we had.
Right, so that's what I would be concerned, if you're going to do that, and you don't have to do that, the city council can create a commission without an ordinance. But if you're going to do an ordinance, then you're gonna wanna make sure this is a hundred percent consistent with that. And you still had one outstanding item on that, and that was whether or not you were gonna segment the areas of the town. Still was not fully defined in the ordinance yet. So I would be a little hesitant, if you're gonna do the ordinance, to approve an application before you approve the ordinance. Cause then you don't know if it's consistent.
So we need to, so it'd be probably best idea to have the ordinance.
Bring them together.
And bring them together, then approve of that together, and then move forward from there, if it's, just, just so for consistency.
That's what I would recommend, because I mean, it's hard to pass this without.
Uh, I would draw my vote.
So, uh, I move, I move this item to be on the next, uh, next agenda.
Second. It's been properly moved and seconded, item seventeen, moving to the next agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? I say it. Eighteen, discuss, consider, and take action on the resolution regarding uses, uses, requesting boundary changes in the city. Councilman Jones?
Uh, so, uh, we received the email from the N double eight CP, uh, League of Defense Fund, um, and received the resolution. And them trying to help us, uh, set our zip code boundaries, uh, as a city. And so, uh, we have a resolution, the letter, uh, like, for the city council, hereby endorsed the August sixth, two thousand nineteen letter from the N double eight CP to, uh, the district manager, David Campbell, requesting a unified zip code for the city of Prairie.
Uh, it's been properly moved and seconded, uh, you've heard the motion, ready for the questions?
My question, so one, uh, my unreadiness, I guess. Um, do we have a resolution number for the top of this?
No, we were just discussing how she's gonna find the resolution number, so she can add it to the next prior to it being signed and, and sent.
And so the second question is, based upon the letter and the resolution that we got, you're, uh, I see here, you've already looked over it?
I drafted the resolution, it did not have one included, so I talked to the N double eight CP attorney, um, and, and got some suggestions. She didn't have a sample, so I just drafted it basically from the information in the letter. And so it's up to you, but yes, it's approved as a form.
Call for a question.
All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Unanimous, I say it. Uh, nineteen, discuss and take action on zip code strategic plan, Councilman Wallace.
So, in continuing on other resolutions that were just passed. Um, so I've been in contact with USPS, uh, to try to resolve the issue with the zip code. So their biggest thing was that they get documentation, basically staying for each property in the city of Prairie, whether it's occupied or vac- or vacant, uh, so that whenever they do, when they place it, they know, when they send out, uh, the letters basically saying, do you want the zip code to be changed? Uh, they'll, they'll be cognizant of what's probably the vacant, which one is occupied. So, uh, after talking to Ms. Baker and what other cities have done, uh, they basically had teams go out and they go door to door, uh, and figure out in that specific area, they broke it down into sections and said, you know, is this, is probably vacant, is it not? Is it one property owner owning multiple lots? And getting all that written to get back to Ms. Baker. So, uh, zip code strategic plan, and, and, and I think this is not a, a quick task. Like, it'll take effort throughout the whole community, uh, but to separate the city into sections, um, get community leaders, uh, the combination of university and outside of the, uh, outside of university community leaders to come together, um, create some specific dates in which, you know, specific weekends to go out, cover this section, then another weekend, cover another section. And just get it all written down, documented, so we can have, hopefully something by the end of this year, so we could turn in to them and say, this is what they could, this is occupied. So the, the document in front of Councilman and Mayor is basically what I'm saying, um, in a nutshell. Uh, with four phases, first one is just team and section creation, like, okay, this is gonna be the section. Um, this is going to be, okay, we want this person to be a team leader, uh, this person on the team, the volunteer. Then phase two is strategic plan, we're just setting the meeting time and dates. Okay, so if we're gonna go to the, we'll do this at this time, on this day. Um, and then establishing a database, you know, to say that, okay, these sections have been done, this section not. Just so we can, uh, be up to date with what's going on. Then phase three is actually going out there, um, and talking to residents, you know, figuring out those vacant, occupied properties. And phase four, just follow up, because they'll be sending out, um, a message, you know, make sure we have, you know, using robo-call and different methodologies, so that they can be aware that sooner or later, they're going to get this message. Because it was articulated to me that they send out the message saying, do you want the zip code changed? And they don't get a response back, they're gonna consider it automatically no. So they have to get a response back of a yes to be considered an option. So this is just a strategic plan for us to have. So if, uh, if it's agreed upon, uh, I would like this, like, to be on the city website, so that people that may not have been there at the meeting, uh, can be able to access the information. If agreed upon, that we can start moving forward and solving, uh, this lingering issue.
How, how are they sending out this information to see if the property's vacant or not?
We would have, like I said, we would have to go, uh, you know, door to door.
Oh, okay, postal service is not sending something out?
Yes, yes.
And you say it comes back?
Yeah, so, no, that's fine. So the process is that, once we get, gather the information, we give it to the USPS. USPS then sends out information based off of what's vacant, was vacant, was occupied. And they send out a message saying, you know, do you want the zip code changed as a boundaries? You know, whatever the parameter that we tell them. And then from there, those people answer back, um, to them. And so, and, and also from Ms. Baker as well, and she wanted us to first just agree to the idea of having a strategic plan, so we can go into further discussion, um, about, you know, what the timelines we think. Cause all, the, the other cities as well are trying to do the same thing. They just wanna be up to date in the processes in the city of Prairie.
We, we, um, we agreed when the zip code thing came up, uh, several months ago, that the, uh, zip code committee, who put in a lot of time and effort and meetings in this, would be involved. Have you contacted any of them to get what they learned and, and going forward? Cause we have a.
Yeah, yeah.
Committee in place.
Yeah, so a lot of this came from talking to people from the zip code committee in terms of.
Oh, okay, so you've already talked to them?
Yeah, I, I talked, I talked to a number of them, and so that's why, you know, they, they, they're for me, to Ms. Baker. I got in contact with Ms. Baker. We've been talking about the strategic plan. And the people on the zip code committee, of course, we'll be reaching out. But I don't want to, to just reach out to them without having some type of plan, so that they understand that they're gonna, cause, so that when they get on board, they understand what's going on, uh, and update. Cause I don't know if what she told me is any different from what had been told in previous years. Cause I don't know if what she told me is any different from what had been told in previous years.
Got you, okay. Just, just check and surely include them.
And, I don't find what, uh, was articulated.
I mean, yeah, we just got to, but what, so, but what is the ask? The ask is for this to be moved to, moved to a committee or this to be moved to, what, what's the ask?
So one, the first thing is.
Cause you said the website.
Yeah, so first thing is, one, just to update, um, where we at with the zip code, that's first and foremost. Um, two is as, as the council, you know, looks at it, the code committee, you know, looks at it and knows that can be all involved. That they agree that, okay, this is, uh, this is a strategic plan, we can adopt this.
So, so today I'll find, I think, is to adopt the zip code.
No, cause we already have, we already, we already have, yeah, we already have the zip code.
I think this is a, a, a great thing that you put together with your information. To, like you said, to share with the zip code committee and then take the power of that sanctioned committee for several years to go forward with the information you have and. See by making it work. Cause I know the only thing that they were really wait, waiting on was we received communication from, say, Ms. Baker. Is that Rosita Baker, am I remembering that correctly?
Rosita Baker.
Right, Rosita Baker. And, uh, and they were just, the committee was told that this process could only be entertained by the postal service every ten years. And now that we're coming up on that with the work that the committee has done, uh, since they were just waiting for that timeframe. I think going back to them with this, since they are duly chartered committee that was carried over. Um, I think this would be a great thing to share with them and pick up on what they know and combine with what you put together.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Yes.
And so you want us to adopt it? Or do you want us to put this to agenda to adopt it? What, what is your ask?
I would put it on the agenda to adopt.
Mr. Mayor? Councilman Rose?
I move that we adopt, we, uh, look, we, I move that we discuss and take action to move this on the next city council meeting, uh, to adopt the Purview zip code strategic plan.
Second. It's been properly moved and seconded that item nineteen be carried over to the next meeting to be on agenda to adopt the zip code strategic plan. You've heard the motion, ready for the questions?
What?
Uh, can, can we incorporate between now and then that you get with, uh, Dr. Hawkins and?
Yeah, I'm in contact with that.
Okay, sounds good, all of, any other readiness? All those in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it, unanimous. Thank you, sir.
And if, uh, if you could just make sure that the, uh, listing looks in and quote next.
Third? She had it.
Uh, twenty, discuss, consider and take action on developing a finance committee. Uh, Mr. Johnson?
Mr. Johnson.
Yeah, I, I, uh, submitted this.
Councilman Jones?
Uh, what I would like to do is get together with you guys at least, uh, every six weeks, um, as this council. Uh, or if, if we can, uh, monthly to discuss, uh, outside of the, the schedule in which you just came.